Good evening, everybody. We are here to, for a special city council meeting for Monday, August 7th, 2017. And we will begin with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Laurenti. Armstrong. Lewis. Solomon.
Here.
Modric.
Here.
Nordstrom. Drew. Scott. Roberts. Jury. We have corn.
Thank you. And before we begin and get down to the people's business, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, folks. So today is the opening of the 2018 budget hearings. We, just as a reminder to the council and the public, we need to have two readings of the budget ordinance before September 30th. And the next scheduled meeting following this one is August 15th at 5:30 PM. And with that, we will now give it over to Mayor Steve Allender, who will present his budget for the next year. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. And it did not escape me that no one prayed for me tonight at this meeting. I'll, I'm gonna do it anyway. So this year's budget preparation has been very interesting. Very interesting and enlightening. The 2018 budget year represents our first full year of implementation of priority-based budgeting. Department Directors and I identified programs, scored those programs through a priority-based scoring mechanism, and engaged in peer review scoring to add a check and balance. The Scoring Foundation addresses the basic program attributes such as: Is the program mandated by law or charter? Do other agencies or organizations provide the program service? What is the portion of the community served by the program? Is there cost recovery associated with the program, and if so, what percentage is recovered? Has there been a change in demand for the program's service, and if so, how much? In addition to identifying the basic program attributes, the expected result of the program is taken into consideration, the desired results. And those desired results are defined in Rapid City's comprehensive plan: A balanced pattern of growth. Economic prosperity, stability, and growth. Efficient, connected transportation and infrastructure systems. Outstanding recreational, cultural, and leisure opportunities. A safe, healthy, inclusive, and skilled community, and a vibrant, active, welcoming, and livable community. The 2017 edition of the city's first budget analyst, Sean Kirbinov, has brought much-needed perspective to this budget process. Through his background and training, he has helped us identify a number of process issues needing corrections. Issues such as: A realistic policy for the use of the city's reserve fund. Collection of regional and national financial data such as gross sales and inflation for comparison of trends which we find present in Rapid City. The need for uniform and reliable methods of projecting revenues and preparing for future expenditures. Adherence to the best practices outlined in the Governance, Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA. Strategies to incorporate priority-based budgeting to the budget process to help make resource allocation decisions. That's the goal. Improvement to central service cost allocation and interdepartmental charges policies. And the need to have a consistent and transparent budget document. Progress is being made, but the corrections to the city's budget process will take a period of years before significant benefits are realized. Of particular concern this year was the downturn in sales tax revenue for the second year in a row. There are signs that sales tax collections are flattening or perhaps rebounding, and I'll show you that in a few minutes. But the long-term forecast is really anyone's guess. Our duty, as I see it, is to bring these issues to light so that together we may find appropriate solutions to create and ensure budget stability. That's what this budget needs, is stability. That's what, if you take anything away from tonight's presentation, it's going to be that we need to find a way to stabilize our city budget process. Typically, the city's general fund revenue falls short of general fund expenditures. The ratio of spending to revenue will lead to an unsustainable financial situation if it goes uncorrected and, if it goes uncorrected. And observation of the 2018 budget highlight this issue when it comes to wages and benefits. Two of our three union contracts all but guarantee raises on multi-year contracts. And we have essentially made promises for wage increases without knowing if we have revenue to cover them. The practice of signing multi-year contracts, it's very convenient. Anyone who's been in the negotiation process knows how efficient it is. But I think the practice leaves the city in a disadvantage, a financial disadvantage, and is something that we should perhaps discontinue in the future. The most obvious area needing correction in this budget process is the updating of rates and fees for city services. Typically, there've been a number of reasons given from year to year. Some reasons being strictly political for disallowing rate changes over the past perhaps decade. During those same years, Rapid City, just like the rest of the country, experienced inflation. Most of us know what it's like when the cost of goods and services go up, but our revenue stays the same. The city's $160 million budget causes this effect to be magnified. The resulting reductions of funding while providing the same service has worsened our financial viability over time. So I'm seeing this as a proactive, I'm gonna present and propose some things to you tonight that I see entirely proactive. We're not in a crisis, we do not need a bailout, we're doing, we're, we are not taking emergency measures. We're actually in good shape. But it, I think anybody can see that if we continue the same practices as we are now, that in 10 years, we won't be in good shape. I'm gonna propose a new rate schedule for interdepartmental charges and payments in lieu of taxes. And I believe it's imperative to address the current rate schedule for city services. Some rates have not changed in this city for 25 or more years. I believe this proposal, we should look at this rate fee and come up with a new proposal by year's end so that you can consider it for the new budget year. I'm proposing to reallocate the city's sales tax. The two pennies that we collect on sales, I'm proposing that we re-divide that differently, and I'll show you the advantages of it. By doing this, we can achieve additional general fund revenue and add funds to our streets and infrastructure rehabilitation and reconstruction efforts. After the implementation year, 2018, there'll be two additional years where we'll gain additional money for infrastructure based on the reallocation. But I believe it's our job, yours and mine, to provide an adequate and stable budget process for our citizens. It'll be our legacy. Let's take a quick peek at the overall economic condition in Rapid City. South Dakota's gross domestic product growth from 2015 to 16 was 1.7%, ranking us number 18 of 50 states. That is not bad. South Dakota's total GDP is $40.7 billion in 2015. Gross sales in South Dakota are on the rise, but in the overall Black Hills region show they're fairly flat. Rapid City's gross sales have risen by $907 million in 2016 to $6.04 billion. So if you're like me, you'd be wondering, well, where's all the sales tax from those sales? Because at 2%, if we're getting 2% on $6 billion, that would be $120 million in sales tax revenue. And I wouldn't have just said what I just got done saying, we'd be in very good shape. Obviously, a lot of these sales are wholesale. Some are perhaps construction-related, maybe for out-of, maybe there's out-of-state sales as well. But we will request from the Department of Revenue an explanation to find out how many of these sales, these increased sales are retail sales. Tourism tax is up. $831 million statewide. Pennington County gets 27.4% of this, while Mini-Haha gets 14.1%. I read an article in the last year that Sioux Falls was outpacing Rapid City on tourism. It didn't sound right then, and it doesn't sound right now. The facts don't back it up either. Here's Rapid City's sales tax collections for the first six months of each year from 2013 forward. You can see that we have a, we have an increase in the first six months. This increase, by the way, was due to the second payment of June sales taxes, which came, we got notified of this morning. If I would've presented this a couple of weeks ago, I would've been telling you the story about how it looks much worse, but it was a good, it was good news. Our sales taxes rebounding. Here's our monthly sales tax collections, January through June of this year. And here's what it looks like in the previous years for the year-to-date sales tax. So the same peak in March, the same dip in April, and the same upturn into June. So we're looking very good. Over $5,700,000 in sales tax revenue for June. Our building permits are looking good. Of course, in 2016, the, the $63 million or so rise has some to do with some individual very large projects. But so far this year, in 2017, $127,500 and some dollars in building permits for the first six months. We're on pace to be upwards of a $300 million year based on the last six-month performance in the past. So it's looking good. Here's the full year building permit totals from 2013 through 16. There was recently an article in the last month or so that said how the Rapid City economy is sluggish. And I defy you to find a builder who thinks the economy in Rapid City is sluggish. We have a lot of building going on. There's a lot of money being spent and pledged for new construction. Those, our, our economy, our overall economy may be stubborn. We don't get the sharp peaks and the dramatic changes in our local economic output. But we have stability overall, and that's good news for us. There's nothing really wrong with this picture. So now we get into the 2018 budget preparation. There's some major challenges and opportunities that shape how we go into this process and how we think about the 2018 budget. We have a growing demand for services. By the way, I'm gonna show you more detail on these bullet points just a little bit later. We have growing, growing demand, we have an increased population, new development, increased valuation in our city development, increased tourism. We have recognized that we are overly reliant on sales tax growth. It is an overall, it is the dominating source of revenue for our city. We have outdated rates and fees for services. We need to reassess the general fund reserve policy, which I'll, I've provided a copy of that for you. And the program creation and reassessment for priority-based budgeting. The creation has occurred, the reassessment is ongoing. And this is our first year, so it feels a little clunky and a little awkward. But we are working on that and already getting new program change ideas to make our tracking of this information better. There's an interdepartmental charge reassessment. Currently, the interdepartmental charges are based on some old formulas. And like many things here, the old formulas have been altered outside of any logic or discernible benefit. But things always change around here for one reason or the other. So we've completed Phase 1: Equitable and Benefit-Based Central Service Charges and Payment in Lieu of Taxes. Phase 2, we will continue to work on in 2018 to implement in 2019. So that will go from one end of city services to the other and make sure that we're all paying the appropriate overhead and receiving funds for the work that's being done for other departments. Sales tax redistribution concerning the general fund, streets, and public infrastructure. We have, this year, for the 2018 budget, we have brought the golf courses from the enterprise fund side over into the general fund side. The goal has not really been realized recently of making money. So now the goal is to break even, and we've brought them over for more appropriate administration. The cemetery was brought on in 2017. Community resources, the community resources department will be reorganized between now and the end of the year. So as far as today, we're still calling it community resources. From that reorganization, there will need to be a strengthening of our human resource team to increase our capabilities there to better protect the city and its employees. And our goal is to have a reasonably detailed, transparent, and professional budget document for you to have in the future. So the general fund demand and cost increase for public services. From 2006 to 16, we've grown in population 9.4%. In the last eight years, our assessed value has increased 26%. The city area has increased by 5.5 and 3/4 square miles, or 11%. From 2005 to 15, the number of single-family residential properties increased by 3,894 units. Multifamily residential properties increased by 1,616 units. More than 2.2 million additional retail establishment square footage was created. More than 676,000 additional square footage of office space and 1.72 million square feet of industrial property. From 2006 through this point in 17, our road lane miles have increased by 128.5, or 13%. And in 2006 through 16, the city has experienced a CPI increase of 17.1%. The cost of doing business is 17% higher today than it was in 2006. So here's the revenue for the general fund. These are all of the revenue sources. And here's what that looks like on a picture. You can see sales tax is 43% of our revenue. Property tax is 25%. And then the other sources are listed. But there is a huge reliance on sales tax collection. I challenge anyone to take this pie chart to a financial advisor and ask them to give you a portfolio that looks similar to this. They will say, you have too much in this 43% category. If it's going to be 43%, it has to be very slow-growing and very safe. Your higher-risk categories are usually your smaller categories. My point is, this is contrary to any common financial portfolio that you might see in the private sector. And what's even worse, I think, or more threatening, is that the sales tax and the property tax collection, where it makes up a good portion of all of the revenue, those are affected by the other. If sales tax is down, it affects property tax and vice versa. Here's our sales tax revenue. On average, our year-to-year growth rates. So over to, on the left, where you see 2004, 9.3%. That is 9.3% over 2003. 2005, it says 8.97%. That is 8.97 over the 9.3. So this is just plotting the percentage of growth from year to year of sales tax revenue. So you can see in 2009, when the, the Great Recession hit, we were down 2.74% below any previous year. Then we came back up, and now we are on this path that is leading up and down, but mostly down. So I bring this up to illustrate this point. We are asking city staff to project sales tax revenue for a coming year based on this. That, that's got to be a job with a high level of error. There is nothing, nothing apparently predictable about this chart for sales tax. And this is our largest revenue source. I think that's important to keep that in mind. Here is an example of our general fund revenue overview. And this is how much the revenue has grown on average from 2008 to 2016. The total revenue growth during that time, 1.14%. We have here Payment in Lieu of Taxes, which goes drastically to the left. Over the last several years, Payment in Lieu of Taxes was essentially taken out of the budget as a revenue source. The others, you can read for yourself, the interdepartmental charges, sales and goods and services, license and permits, all those have had some growth. So in, in a summary of that, our sales tax reliance is hurting the predictability of this budget. It's hurting the stability of this budget. And the decline in the last two years has everyone a little worried. Our potential of our other source of revenues has been neglected over the years. Our potential of our other source of revenues has been neglected over the years. The property tax revenue philosophy should be evaluated. And keep in mind, I've worked on this budget for some time. City staff has been working on this budget relentlessly for months. And at the end of tonight's presentation, I am personally, and we as a group on this side of the dais are done working on this, and it becomes the council's budget. So you can't hurt my feelings by changing anything in this budget. We don't have to have a battle over a disagreement on philosophy or anything of that nature. I'm doing my work, I'll be done doing it in another 30 minutes, and then it'll be your, your job. And I'm not going to stand by and criticize you while you do your job. But I'm telling you, the property tax revenue philosophy has to be a subject of discussion. We have to understand the benefits and the downfall of accepting property tax revenue. The use of undesignated cash in this lack of stability, in this unstable process, has been increasingly necessary in order to balance. Fees for permits, licenses, and charges need to be evaluated if we intend for that to be a real source of revenue, because we are not, we are not recouping what we're putting into these services. Maybe we were 25 years ago when the, some of the prices were designed, but we're not anymore. So if this is to be a source of revenue, to, to help diversify our revenue sources a little bit, we really need to take a serious look at it and consider adjusting those things. More on the general fund budget. General fund budgets really, well, all the work is. The enterprise side of the budgeting process, relatively easy. They make revenue, they have overhead, they balance, they buy their own equipment, they do their own work. General fund is a little more complicated, and it takes 10 times the work that the enterprise side does. So the major drivers in this budget request is the increase in personnel costs. I don't have a specific number of FTEs for you this year. I know that we have added one for streets. That is what became necessary for all of the newly annexed areas. And so presumably, there's some growth revenue there to offset those costs. But in the next six months, next five months, I'm going to propose to you how we should move forward with our human resource and our community resources, reorganization and rebuilding. And I have budgeted to that end enough, depending on the type of employee, we don't even have the type of employee fully identified yet. I've budgeted $170 in wages and all the resulting benefits, which, if they're one type of employee, could net up to four employees for that cost, but if one is a more of a professional-grade job description, maybe that would yield us three in that area. Additional costs and revenues for parks and rec due to the addition of the golf courses and the cemeteries, and increased central services charges and payment in lieu of taxes. So here's the 2018 general fund budget request by department. And I should also tell you, we intended to have much more information available tonight. We, I think we are done with nine or 10 of, all but one of the departments. And so we will have that done in the next couple of days and send that to you so that you have more information to review. Here's the general fund proposed spending in a pie chart. You can see that, and we've grouped these in a consistent manner to how they've been grouped in past city budgets so that we can look back historically and see how we're doing. Public safety, 47% of the general fund budget. Culture and recreation, which includes everything from planning to museums and libraries and that sort of thing, 22%. Public works, 15, and so on. Our subsidies don't make up 1%, so it registers as a zero. So let's talk about the reallocation of sales tax. This is currently how we allocate our two cents of sales tax. So take, imagine two pennies, or, and 0.92% of one of those pennies goes into the general fund. 0.16 of those two pennies comes out for utility support. 0.46 comes out both for CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and also for the Vision Fund. And that's it. That sounds pretty simple, except for the fact that over time, other projects are being funded out of the 0.16 utility support. Utility support is being funded by a hodgepodge of other revenue sources and line items. The CIP, 0.46, frankly, and I'm not, this isn't an indictment on anybody who's done this, but everyone has tried to get their fingers in CIP over time. And it is a stable revenue source, but we are paying for fire trucks, we're paying for computers, we're paying for all types of things. And if anyone has a project that they don't currently have money in their budget for, they come to a CIP meeting and try to get the money from CIP. That CIP was intended for a different purpose, for infrastructure, for all the things we, all the things we clamor about as a city government. We need roads, we need infrastructure, we need utilities, we need, my, my streets are bad, on and on and on. Where's the money? Well, let me tell you where we're going to get some of that money. This is a proposal. Obviously, you're going to have to approve or deny this, or come up with your own version of it, but here's what I propose. We roll up and make a full penny come out into the general fund. That's an increase of general fund revenue of $2,255,000. We change CIP from 0.46 to 0.58, and that is an increase of 3.38 million. And we change Vision from 0.46 to 0.42 for a decrease of $1,127,000, or in the ballpark of what we were collecting during the Vision, for Vision in about 2015. So we're just setting a couple of years back on collections there, but still lots of, lots of revenue coming in there. So the advantages of reallocation is that we increase, there's an increase in infrastructure funding, there's an increase in general fund revenue, and we take another step toward stability, because with this, we also need to put in some measures to protect these revenue sources. Here's, here's the disadvantage. It's a slight reduction in Vision funding, and this does not cure all of the allocation issues, which I'll also get to in the next slide or two. There's a draft CIP policy that has been provided to the council members and will be available to the media. Now, look here one more time on the right-hand side where it says point, I'll stop it, where it says 0.58 CIP. We're taking 0.58 of one penny into the CIP fund. So we're rolling that over into the next slide. In streets, drainage, and miscellaneous improvement projects, that will provide an $874,840 increase in funding in the first year. In the second year, we have an obligation to pay on a county project this year, or in, in 2018, which will be $300,000. 2019, that $300,000 becomes available and can be put in with the 874. We're also paying debt service out of CIP now for computer software and some other things that result in $362,000, and that can be rolled over in the third year for a total increase in the CIP of $1,537,144. Now, that's an increase in today's dollars only, and that does not account for any growth that this fund will have. So over the, over the years, this fund may grow in excess of 2%, and that's going to add up to real, a real revenue stream. So the goal then will be to make the CIP funding a pure funding source, where everyone else stays out. So that's going to take a few years to get that realigned. This will also include an increase to parks, slight increase to parks and government facilities, and also interdepartmental charges. This will result in a reduction in IT of $70,000, and this is a part of a long-term plan to get IT funding out of CIP and back in the general fund under IT. Reduction in fire vehicles of $36,000, also as a part of a long-term plan. These long-term plans can only be successful if we pay attention to the revenue sources of the general fund, and we can, we can build up adequate funding in the general fund in order to bleed this money off of CIP. But in the end, when we're successful, we have now with these two items, we have put another 600 or 700,000, made that available to go into streets, drainage, and miscellaneous improvement projects. So this sounds like, I mean, although it's a lot of money, and big chunks of money, it sounds like we're going to add nickels and dimes to this account over the years, but that's what's going to be necessary based on all of the changes that we've made to this funding over the years. This will also be the elimination of a capital matching grant of $225,000 that's kept in CIP. That is for, that is to have quick money available for matching money for grants. It's hardly ever used. We encourage the departments to budget accordingly for matching funds, to not apply for grants that they don't have matching funds or access. Plus, there are other sources for matching fund money. Doesn't have to come out of money that I think was intended for streets. So that'll take $225,000 back out, and then we'll eliminate the CIP contingency fund, which has been used for everything other than a CIP contingency. This is where all of the projects come in, because they see this contingency item, and so they come, come asking for it. So this will be the result on the CIP side of the sales tax reallocation. Okay, now let's get to general fund, central services cost allocation. The goals are to identify the actual cost of services being provided to citizens, to equitably share the costs of central services, to ensure accuracy of the cost-based user fees for the enterprise funds. And these are a list of the central services. Human resources, information technology, legal, finance, and equipment maintenance. So in a nutshell, an enterprise fund operates like a private business, but do not have to endure the same overhead as a private business, such as property tax and sales tax. And so therefore, city, the general fund departments, like the city attorney, or finance, or IT, provide services for the enterprise funds. And the idea of assessing a cost back to the enterprise fund is to create a similar overhead situation that a private business would have, to make sure that everyone's paying their fair share of the bill. Here are the changes that we found in the general fund central services allocations. Human resources will see 50,000-plus increase. You can read them here for yourself. Information technology will see an increase. Equipment maintenance, an increase. Finance, an increase. And we found out that we're charging the attorney's office too much, that the actual cost is really not, was not reflected in the current process, so we've backed some of that funding back out there, because the goal is fair and equitable costs for services actually being provided. So I'm proposing a general fund reserve policy to you. And in the interest of budget stability, remember the chart that I showed you with the huge valley during, where the recession occurred in 2009, and I talked about how unstable it is? Well, we have a reserve that has been made, the policy has been put into city law that it has to be 15% of the budgeted general fund expenditures, less those expenditures for capital outlay. And we have learned that the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting recommendation is that government should maintain a prudent level of financial resources to protect against reducing service levels or raising taxes or fees because of temporary revenue shortfalls. So if the 2009 recession wasn't a temporary revenue shortfall, I don't know what it was. That would have been the perfect year to use part of the reserve. So the policies should establish how and when a government builds up stabilization funds, and should identify the purpose for which may, they may be used. So you have the, the draft language of a reserve policy, I believe, in front of you, but here's the important bullet points. It's to create and maintain, really essentially, virtually split the reserve into two categories, emergency reserve and stability reserve. Emergency reserve will be used for things out of our control, such as Winter Storm Atlas, for example. Something like that, that really knocks us back a few steps. And 2/3rds majority is required to use that reserve, and, and probably as it should be. Now, the stability reserve is for mitigation of financial and service delivery risks due to unexpected revenue shortfalls and unanticipated, anticipated critical expenditures. So if in 2019, we had easy access to a fund that we could fill in a good portion of that valley created during the recession, we could maintain stable service delivery, not have a financial panic phase, and then follow up with a replenishment plan. So the idea with that would be the mayor would recommend it, the council would approve it, and a simple majority would allow it. Assessment of the use is tied to indicators of economic activity, such as sales tax. So there should be limitations on us using it, but it would be more logical. And by the way, our reserve fund, 15%, or you could make it whatever you want to make it, that'll pay for a blizzard, it won't pay for a tornado or a flood. That's about two weeks of payroll or less. And so anyway, this is good, smart, and this, this takes another step toward stability, budget stability. Give us a way to easily mitigate the little dips in revenue so that we don't have a financial So summary and the road ahead. Our economy's okay, but the budgeting process must be changed. We should continue to find ways to streamline the budget process, and we should address the revenue philosophy. Everything from sales and property tax down to service, fees for services and goods and that sort of thing. Phase Two of the assessment of interdepartmental charges will be ready for your review for the 2019 budget. And a, and a GFOA-compliant budget document will be available then as well. A one-stop document to increase transparency, accountability, and citizen involvement in the budget process. Frankly, I mean, even though I've been part of it now for a couple of years, we just get up here and wing it. We just see what, which direction we think the wind is blowing, we adapt to it, and we try to get something that will get us past this hearing, past this budget session, and then we go back to work. I think that's really making the problem worse, or I think that's creating more of a threat than a benefit. I think we've got to be smart here, and we have to figure out how to stabilize this budget, both in revenue and expenditures, to, to, to take the fear away here, to make sure we're providing good services, we can justify the services we are providing and the costs associated with them. And more priority-based budgeting program optimization, to include a closer review of the third and fourth quartile programs. Those are generally thought of to be the, not the top essential priorities or the mandatory programs. And then also look into Quartile I and II programs with a low reliance on those services or low and declining demand for the services. One of the things... One of the things, one of the threats to government finance is to keep doing things the way you've always done them, for fear of making someone upset, for fear of putting off a group, or an individual, or for fear of a headline in a newspaper, or something of that nature. There's, there's a bigger picture here, and I think that's where our responsibility comes in. So. That was the good news. I've done, I've done the council a favor by summarizing all of the controversial budget cuts in one slide. This is not all of the budget cuts. There's been cutting going on in this budget for months, cutting, trimming, adjusting. But these are things that are being eliminated, that are going to generate phone calls and emails and other things to you and to me, because there's a lot of emotion tied to these things. Guys, we'll take a break now, or go ahead. We're going to eliminate RSVP, the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. That'll save a minimum of $40,000 out of the general fund. Many, many years ago, when RSVP was, when it originated, was grant-funded. Over the years, the grant funds have diminished, the costs have gone up, and now we are dipping, we've been dipping into general fund to supplement this program year after year, and it's gotten more expensive each year. This year, so far, we've expended about $40,000 to keep RSVP funded. We've had the Government Efficiency Committee look at this program. We have scored this program in priority-based budgeting. Without going into all the details here, and now, I'll just tell you that this is part of a process that brought us to this decision. And it is not because we don't like seniors. I mean, I like Dan Seffner just fine. This does not stop volunteerism, this does not stop senior volunteerism. This has nothing, this makes no statement about seniors or volunteerism. This is a statement about whether or not it's appropriate for the government to be performing this task, and I've concluded that it's not. So it's eliminated. IT live streaming of meetings. We know how many people watch the meetings online, live. And it is not justified with an $18,000 direct cost. It's just not justified. The alternative will be, we still record the meetings, and after the meeting, we post it online. That's the only difference that will occur, and to, to make those 42 people, or however many, log on. Jim Gilbert, I know Lisa's one of them, but to make to make it easy for them, we're just asking them to wait until the meeting's over and see the whole meeting online. $18,000. The crossing guard program. We're not really cutting this because we don't think it's a good idea. We're cutting it because we've reached an agreement with the school, for the school to provide this service, rather than the city. So there's no longer a need for the city crossing guard program. The Journey Museum, a reduction in the Journey Museum funding. The Human Services Community Investments, this is one of the $102,000 categories that we assemble the Human Services, or the, the Community Investments Committee, and we dole out $102,000 to a number of applicants in increments of as little as $500 to as much as 10, or 20, or $30,000. So we're cutting 52,000 out of that, which will leave 50,000 in that category. The Allied Arts Fund Community Investments, also $102,000 line item awarded by the Allied Arts Fund Board. And we're cutting 27,000 out of that to make it 75,000. Those recipients of this money, this is online, we can send you a document. There's a number of folks who are recipients that either have a written agreement, or are funded through city ordinance. And it has a good report on what percentage of their budget, and how much they get, and that sort of thing. But I think this, this reduction is sustainable. So that's it for the notable budget cuts. And that totals $184,000. And there's two more items that are not cuts, but they're going to be equally controversial. And that is the Minna Lusahan Senior Citizen and the Canyon Lake Senior Citizen. The city has been giving money to those two organizations for some time, in unequal amounts. Minna Lusahan Senior Citizen was receiving $21,500 annually, and Canyon Lake was receiving $14,000 annually. I have met with both organizations, and I cannot see justification to have this inequity. So I have averaged those, and proposing that we give them the same. They all have relatively the same membership, and the difference in, the difference in allocations is believed to be that everyone who goes to Minna Lusahan is poor, and everyone that goes to Canyon Lake is rich. And, but neither organization has any requirement to prove income or anything else, it's an assumption. Minna Lusahan is in a city building, Canyon Lake Senior Citizen is in a privately owned building. So like I said, this will create more controversy, but I think it's the right thing to do. And that's why I'm proposing it. So, your budget packets are partially, have partially been made available to you. I apologize for that, I had much bigger dreams for a budget packet. But you will be receiving more in just a few days, and then there's a lot more coming your way in terms of documents. So my plan this year was to have less fine details in the PowerPoint, and more on paper where you could study it. And we'll have that, and I believe we'll be able to get you everything you need before the first budget hearing. I would ask you, based on feedback, both from council, some council people, and from city departments, that budgets about, or questions about this budget in detail, that if you could send those to the mayor's office, we will get answers back for you. Also, if you could allow us to coordinate the invitations you have for future budget meetings, we'd like to coordinate that for you as well. So if you, if you look and you're going to do public works and planning in the library during one hearing, let us know, and we'll have the appropriate personnel there, just to make things easier. But there's nothing, nothing secret here, all questions will be answered, as long as there's an answer to the question, and and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as a overview for city council members up here today, we'll have a future budget hearing. So if you have questions to please, and we'll, we'll get to yours in just a moment, but if you have questions that need thoughtful analysis, email them to the mayor, so that he can get those ready and prepared. For the remainder of our time, until seven o'clock tonight, if needed, we can have some initial comments and questions to the mayor. And with that, we'll begin with Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move to acknowledge.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge the mayor's budget presentation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Any other questions? Alderwoman Scott.
Well, thank you. Mayor, I just wanted to give a comment. I know that I've been on the city council since 2012. A lot that you have presented tonight was incorporated in a lot of the different discussions over the years. I have to tell you, I came in here after your presentation last year, and I was ready to sit back and just go one ear out the other, because I really didn't get a lot out of last year's presentation. And you know that, because I've told you that, that's nothing new. But I will tell you, without having any information presented ahead of time, without having any heads up on what you were presenting, I'm excited to go through this stack of documents, because you've, you've promised, we've got a lot of detail in here. I know it's going to take a lot of work of every council member on the, up here, to go through this, so that we can have a really good discussion. I appreciate you presenting the priority-based budget to us this year. This is really the first glimpse that the citizens, as well as many on the city council, are getting about how this priority-based budgeting is going to work. You've proposed a lot of the changes that the council has talked about, and you said that you and the staff have worked on it, and that it will be our legacy, as far as you and your staff, as well as the city council, once we adopt it. I appreciate you doing a lot of the legwork, legwork for us. And I have to just give you kudos, I have to, I have to give you kudos, because a lot of this stuff is what I've been talking about for many years, so I appreciate you putting the effort into it. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for listening and for being patient with me. I think if I would have had another month or two to work on this, I could have worked full-time on it the entire time. I just had to draw it to a close, and I finished less than five minutes before this hearing started, so, but thanks.
Chair recognizes Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor, thank you very much for this presentation. Just a couple of things, one, thank you very much for this presentation. I know we've got a long ways to go to get to another iteration of the priority-based budgeting and the process, and really how it works. So I appreciate your getting this program started off of that. One other request that I have for you is, you started off with, I'm going to call it a preamble, or a goal setting. Could you send that to us before I start doing this massive amount of homework that you've given us? I really appreciate all the other information that you provided as well.
Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you. Yield.
All right, the motion on the table is to move to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.